We call the meeting to order. Please stand for the prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. In the end, it's not a temptation, but deliver us from evil, for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory. Whoever.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item D on the agenda, its approval of minutes from the June 6, 2022 council meeting. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the minute shall stand approved. Hearing none, they will stand approved. Item F, reports from council committees. Item F1, the electric committee was to meet on June 13, 2022. Due to lack of a quorum, no action was taken. F2, water sewer refuse recycling and litter committee did not meet on June 13, 2022 due to lack of agenda items. And F3, the municipal properties building land use and economic development committee met on June 13, 2022. And Ms. Snepley.
Thank you. We're recommending to council to approve amending the engineering rule 4.1.3 regarding the width of driveways and by adding unless approved by the engineer and modifying the drainage calculations in rule 4.1.6. And we're also recommending council approve the additional improvements to be made to the police department building.
Thank you, ma'am. Item F4, the park and recreation committee did not meet earlier tonight due to lack of agenda items. Move on to item H, introduction of new ordinances and resolutions. Item H1, ordinance number 034-22, an ordinance creating the non-bargaining position of assistant operations superintendent for the city of Napoleon, Ohio on a temporary basis and declaring an emergency. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Thank you.
Thank you. As previously discussed, this was a recommendation from the Safety and Human Resources Committee meeting that met at the fourth Monday of last month. And the recommendation was to hire an assistant superintendent at the operations building so that somebody can train and learn how that operation works under Jeff Rathke before his retirement. We're anticipating to be June 1 of next year, but he's going to be burning some vacation time before that time. So we're anticipating his departure sometime around April of 2023. Requesting first read.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Joel, do you want to call the roll this evening?
Oh, yes, that's right. Sorry about that, hang on. Okay, Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Dan's not here. Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yep.
Molly?
Yes.
I'll move on to second read. Item H2, ordinance number 035-22, an ordinance amending a certain section of the city of Napoleon personnel code, specifically section 197.06B residency requirements. Do we have a motion?
Same route. Second.
Joel?
Actually, if you don't mind, I'll kick it over to chief.
Chief O'Brien.
This is just a cleanup item for personnel code that has the residency requirement for the part-time personnel of our department. Currently has like a 15-mile radius as the crow flies for all personnel there. But we do have part-timers that live outside of that 15 miles that would work. So just an old one that needs to be cleaned up in the personnel code.
Thank you, chief.
If a part-timer becomes a full-timer, then it has to move in closure?
Yeah, so it's county or adjoining county is the way that that works right now.
Right now?
Yep. So if you're full-time, it's county or adjoining county as the part-time responder. And it was because initially, back when I was first created, we didn't have part-timers that actually worked at the station. The only people that ever worked at the station were full-time. Now with having part-timers that work at the station, then some may live. We just kind of use that same rule, county adjoining county.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. Joel?
Thank you. Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
That will also move on to second read. Item H3, resolution number 036-22, a resolution authorizing the city of Napoleon to remain in the Maumee Valley East CHIP consortium in order to submit an application for the fiscal year 2022 Community Housing Improvement Program, CHIP funds, to the Ohio Development Services Agency and declaring an emergency. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Joel?
Thank you, Council President Protem. And this item is for the city to re-enter into an agreement with the Maumee Valley Planning Organization. This is the Maumee Valley East CHIP Consortium, comprised of City of Napoleon, Fulton County, City of Waseon, and Henry County. And Maumee Valley, it's the CHIP program, the Community Housing Improvement Program. And this is basically money in and money out. So it's grant money used, run by Maumee Valley Planning Organization. We have to keep it on our books for auditing purposes. It's used for housing improvements for eligible applicants throughout town. And we're requesting suspension at the request of Maumee Valley Planning Organization. Their application is actually due this week. So we would need to, in order to enter into this agreement, we would need this passed tonight. And then they would send their application in for additional funding.
Motion for suspension.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
Second.
Thank you. Joel, please read the roll for suspension.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Any discussion or questions? Hearing none.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yep.
Molly?
Yes.
That will pass on first read under suspension and emergency. Item I, second reading of ordinances and resolutions. There are none this evening. Item J, third reading of ordinances and resolutions. Item J1, we have ordinance number 028-22, an ordinance addressing the provisions of and authorizing the city of Napoleon, Ohio to opt out of amended solution house number, substitute house number 172, in reaffirming the ban on the possession, sale, and discharging, igniting, or exploding fireworks within the city of Napoleon, Ohio, as set forth in chapter 1519 of the codified ordinances of the city of Napoleon, Ohio, as it existed prior to the enactment of amended substitute House Bill 172 and declaring an emergency. Do we have a motion?
A motion.
Second.
Thank you. Billy?
Thank you, Council President Protem. I don't have anything to add. If anybody has any questions, I can feel them. But we've discussed this a couple of times now. It's just reaffirming our rules.
So firecrackers, sparklers, and bottle rockets are allowed? Anything beyond that?
Yeah, anything that goes up into the air and explodes is maybe, maybe don't quote me on exactly. But you know, it's, yeah, I mean, the sparkler's not gonna, it's not gonna, nothing like that. But people are still gonna do it, unfortunately. This just reaffirms our rules on bottle rockets and things that go up into the sky and explode and potentially burn people's houses down.
No more work for the fire chief. If there's no other questions or discussion, Joel, will you call the roll?
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
That will pass on third read. Item J2, resolution 029-22, a resolution authorizing the transfer of certain property to wit approximately 10.1 acres more or less of real property, parcel number 28-070078.0200, owned by the city to the Community Improvement Corporation of Henry County, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Joel?
Thank you. This is the third and final read on this item. We are still planning to close. Right now, we have it scheduled for July 11, with work anticipated to start sometime in September.
Is it hay crop this year? It was corn last year.
Whoever's farming that doesn't have the permission from the city to farm that. So whoever's doing that will, you know, will...
But it's not, it's not corn this year. It was corn last year.
I have no idea.
It was corn last year. Whoever's doing it is doing it illegally, so.
I gotta imagine there's probably some handshake agreement from 10-plus years ago. But to my knowledge, to anyone's knowledge, we received nothing from that. If anything, they should at least be paying our taxes on the land. But that'll probably cease anyway after you sell it, so.
That's right.
Hearing no other discussion. Joel, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Pass on third read. Moving on to item K, good of the city. Item K1, discussion or action? Approval of power supply cost adjustment factor for June 2022, SPSCAF three-month average factor 0.02156 and JV2 0.073844.
Thank you. So it gives the appearance, and it is up a little bit this month. And we still are in the April usage month and March usage and February usage months. And that, these are what we consider the shoulder months where people aren't using as much electricity. So the rates are higher. But you know, when we get into the summer months, the rates go down, but people are using more electricity, so their bills are higher. That's kind of how that works. But we're seeing the spikes from, some of the, some of it is caused by the, there was a congestion issue at the Prairie Estate facility that has been resolved. But that's still carrying into the bills for this month. But also, we're seeing the, we're starting to see at the beginning of the year, the hike in global energy prices, which I did explain. Lori, you were there for the Board of Public Affairs meeting and heard all of that. And if, you know, I did put something in the weekly FYI, and I also, if you get a chance, read the minutes of that meeting, too, if you want more details. But I don't know if you want me to go into any more detail or not.
There was a nice article in the Northwest Signal about it.
And there was a nice article in the Northwest Signal. That's right. So it covered a lot of ground, but you know, energy prices are up globally. So I don't know how to capture this in the correct way. The good news is our rates aren't going up nearly as much as everybody else's. So that, you know, we are seeing the price hikes of everything, too, just from general inflation, go up in some of the operating costs and everything else. But we're also seeing those, specifically those natural gas prices up for the Fremont Energy Center and buying off the market. So that's where we're seeing our rates going up at in those two categories. Another reason why they suggested, and always do suggest as much as they can, they being the experts in building portfolios to diversify your portfolio so that you're not tied to any one source of fuel so that you can kind of stave off some of these wild spikes in any one of these industries. So that's all I have. I'll stop there if anybody has any questions.
What further questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
A motion.
Second.
Joel?
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Moving on to item K2, discussion or action on recommendation from Board of Public Affairs to move forward with the substation fiber connection project.
All right, I'm gonna, I'll lead it off and ask Greg to chime in here. Pardon me, I've got a lot of documents opened up at the moment. So I'm trying to, try to close some of these out. Here we go. So this was, this one's a little, back when Denny was the superintendent, we looked at and discussed the poll attachment agreements between all of the entities that attached to our polls. And each entity customarily is supposed to pay a certain fee for those poll attachments. Depends on the number of polls that they attach to. And for each poll, there's a fee attached to it. Denny had found out that, I believe it was Ridgeville Telephone Company that did not have any contract in place when all the other utilities had contracts in place to attach to our polls. We had, while he was there, this would have been three or four years ago. This was corrected. We entered into an agreement with them to pay the poll attachment fees, which they, you know, we bill them annually for. But since then, we've just recently been made aware that we are using a fiber line that is owned by Ridgeville. And they are now charging us a certain fee to use that fiber connection to our Glenwood and Northside substations. So upon review of the electric department staff, we have a quote, and the summary is that it's the recommendation of staff to have a fiber line installed yet this year. We'll own our own fiber line. We do own other fiber lines around the city, but this would be in addition to that. The quote right now is $146,880. It will pay itself off in the short term, short term being less than 10 years at this point. But, you know, and it could be less than that. But right now, we're, we'll be paying, you know, $40,000 for the lease from Ridgeville. And then, you know, we get into a 20-year contract with them. That's what they're stating, that they want us to enter into a 20-year contract with them. So this investment would pay itself off from that. But also, you know, if there's ever a need for additional fiber usage, we would have that capacity there built into this fiber line that's constructed and owned by the utility. So the recommendation is to move forward with that. With the approval from, if council approves of this, we would add it to the second quarter budget adjustment, go through the necessary steps in order to contract the work out, which then it would come back to city council for approval of a contract for the construction of this utility fiber line. So that's it.
Greg, do you have anything to add?
Experts, they'll get $300,000 over. And I don't even know what the next contract renewal, it may be more than the amount we're paying. And that was 20 years ago. So I'm sure they're probably gonna get us with a different price. Yeah, you gotta come up with 150 up front, but we own it. And you can possibly make money. If somebody else wants to jump on that main truck, there's actually a lot of money to be made for rental and stuff or usage of fiber. So it just, I mean, again, it's over 20, 40, 60, how you renew. But, you know, you're looking for the next 60 years, a million dollars versus just coming up with $150,000 and owning it and never having to worry about it again. So we would have to transfer over those places that we feed, kind of like the courthouse and police department and whatnot. And that might be an additional like 20, 30,000. But again, it'd be, be ours. They're actually, I think right now, it's kind of a wash between us and Ridgeville with all our whole rental attachments to them and then next to us. So we would continue to get our 100,000 with them. But we wouldn't be paying that much.
So our 20-year contract with Ridgeville Telephone is expiring soon?
Next year.
Next year. And we don't have yet a proposal from the telephone company to say, if you were with us again, it's going to be this much. We're anticipating it to be higher than our current rate.
I would. If you don't ever see anything, we're gonna charge you less money this time.
It would be nice to have that number, though, before spending $100,000 in anticipation of a higher rate. Just if we can encourage them to send us a proposal, right? So we can go, yep, we're gonna say, well, I'm gonna be doing that. I think you're absolutely right, but it'd be nice just to cover our bases.
Joel, are we looking for approval?
Yes, looking for approval. And then we can add it to the second quarter budget adjustments. So it'll show up again in the legislation for the proper appropriation from the proper account for that purpose, since we don't have anything appropriated now for that.
Is there a motion to approve or a motion to table until we receive a proposal from Ridgeville?
If we put this in a second quarter budget adjustment, it's not being spent yet, so it's gonna come through as a, to spend. Right? We're just adjusting it so it gives us the appropriations that we can do it, as we're going to. We're still gonna figure exactly how much it is. Because, or do we know it's 154 for us?
That was at the March 20.
That's this year's number?
The 146.
146?
146, 880.
Oh, yeah. That's what things have done in life.
No, I understand, right. But that, okay, that's, okay.
What are we paying for renting it right now per year?
13,700. 13,700. And then we have the last contract, they charged us 20,000 upfront and then 13,000. So we paid about 40,000 just to renew the contract. And that was 20 years.
Right.
And poll attachments have not gone down. If anything, they've, you know, gone up. And it's not so much a poll attachment even with this. There's a lot of money being made in fiber connections. So.
There's a lot of extra bandwidth that can be used by somebody else.
Yes.
And we would own it. We could rent it out.
Right. It's also a money maker.
Right.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Molly.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Joel, please call the roll.
Okay, Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Moving on to item K3, discussion or action on recommendation to admit engineering rules 4.1.3 regarding drive approaches by adding, unless approved by the engineer, and to modify drainage calculations in rule 4.1.6. Joel?
Just directing the law director to draft legislation. There's, you know, we discussed it in the municipal properties committee meeting. And we'll have the, if we have the legislation, we can kind of go over in more detail what the changes were. There were some other housekeeping items, too, that were addressed in that, so.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Joel, will you call the roll, please?
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Item K4, discussion or action on municipal properties committee recommendation to approve additional improvements at the police department building.
Thank you. Yep, another item that was in the municipal properties committee meeting. And pardon me, I closed out one too many. Let's see here, what was this one? The engineering rules. Scrolling down. Do we have that? It's not in the packet. I don't know why it's not in the packet, but I do have, there should have been a quote in here for $10,400. And this would have been for the, what we're referring to is the decontamination area of the police department. This is the shower sink. We want to add a washer and dryer. And this would be for officers that come into contact with something that they probably shouldn't be coming into contact to and rather than taking it home and washing their clothes or by other means, washing their clothes or washing their items and taking showers. Having a proper facility at the station for them to do these things in. That's what these improvements would be for, so. Don't really have anything else to add unless you have something you want to add.
I think that pretty much covers it.
Okay.
Unless there's questions.
Would this be there by the back door? Wouldn't it come directly in there?
Yeah, this would be where the current shower is.
Okay.
But that hasn't been modified since we moved into that building minus a slop sink being added at one time. So it would be in that same area.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Thank you. Joel, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Item K5, discussion or action, second quarter budget adjustments.
President Protem, this is regarding the finance committee that meeting for next week. We will have second quarter budget adjustments. And we're asking for the law director to draft legislation following said meeting. In addition, I would like the motion to also include legislation for the annual revenue budget, which needs to be submitted to the county auditor in July. So it'd be for the 2023 revenue budget as well, which will be discussed in the finance committee. Just need legislation for that to be sent to council after the meeting.
Perfect. Joel, if Rox was here, I would have no doubt that she would have captured that. I'm sure your honor as well. Do we have any questions or discussion before we have a motion to approve? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
A motion.
Second.
Thank you. Joel?
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Item K six, discussion or action, economic development transfer form approval from Shane Holtz, McCarnes, Inc., main stop location.
This is a request to direct the law director to draft legislation for a Trexing permit that has been sent to us, you see it on the screen here. This is for the company to bring in or transfer a liquor permit from a different area that's available to our area. So there's a process for that. In the Ohio liquor laws, they allow for it. So they're, they're requesting the approval from the city in order to sign this and bring this into the main stop location.
So when this was submitted, I learned something because I'd never heard of this.
Right. And I'm. Good, because I'm like, I've never heard of this either.
I have never heard of this one. Apparently, under forty-three oh three point two nine, you can transfer in certain. This one, I think, is asking for a C one and a C two to be transferred in.
Oh.
Do we know where it's coming from? I don't, I don't recall that being on there. Not important, not important for right, right this second, but apparently if there's an economic development project, and I guess I'll use those words in quotation, and, and the liquor transfer is attached to that economic development project, you can, with the approval of the state, of course, transfer that permit in. And that's something that I'd never heard of, and I had to research. And I was trying to research what they mean by economic development project. There is absolutely no definition in the statute or in case law or anywhere else. And so looking at these numbers, these potential numbers here, it looks like I, we would have a good, solid argument that this would be economically good for the city. And so without a, without a definition coming from any state source or anywhere else, I think that this would qualify as an economic development project. And I did a little further digging. I'm not entirely certain that legislation is absolutely necessary, but I think it would be a good thing for us and for, for the company as well, just so that they can have that to attach to their, to their application.
So are they transferring in one they don't currently use? Or are they just transferring in because they have one because of the kind of company that they have?
They still have to purchase it from somebody, but it's going to be either out of the city or out of county. I'm not, I'm not certain where it's coming from.
Okay.
And I don't believe that was in the application anywhere.
And this is the main stop going in by Taco Bell, Scott Street, right?
Yep.
Yeah, so I, it has to come from somewhere.
Okay.
But you can transfer it in from other parts of the state. If you, after you've purchased it.
Cool.
And you pass through all these hoops here, assuming the state approves it. It still, it still does have to go through the state process, and the state could still shoot it down. But assuming council agrees, if, if, if we're okay with it, then that would help them along in their process.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, I'm looking for a motion to direct the law director to draft legislation.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Perfect. Moving on to item K seven, discussion or action, approved donation of four hundred dollars from BGT Charities to the Napoleon Police Department for the youth summer program. Chief Mack, take that.
Thank you, sir. This was a donation we received, part, in part went toward the cops and bobbers. Also, the kickball tournament that's coming up and a few other things that we're going to try and plan.
Thanks to that group. Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you, Joel?
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
All right.
Virgine Taylor charities?
I wasn't.
Okay. I was on.
That's where the checks come from.
That's fine. I'm thinking Bitwheel, Big Tire, I haven't been there in a long time, man, that's an old charity. At BG, that's what I was thinking. Virgine Taylor McWhalemore says.
I'll go around the table. Kevin, I'll let you start us off today.
Oh, great, thank you, President Protam. I have a couple of things. One is peak shaving. Just a general reminder to everybody and as council members and members of the community that peak shaving does make a difference for our utility rates. If you look, and you could scroll up, or I could just tell you, and you could trust me, but if you look at the AMP bill, it'll say right on the bill up at the top, the amount of usage, and also peak shaving right down there. Municipal peak in total metered energy. As that total peak, the part of the formula for the AMP bill, which then is dispersed out in a three-month period of time, is based upon our peak of a day in a month or at, by the hour. So when it gets very, very hot and people pull a lot more power, anything that we can do as citizens to lower that peak amount certainly does help lower our electric usage or lower our costs with that. So just a general reminder of that. The other thing that I have on my agenda to discuss is Juneteenth. Juneteenth is now a federal, a state, a county, and various cities and villages holiday in the state of Ohio. I would encourage, maybe this needs to go to the personnel committee, that the city, the city of Napoleon look at also recognizing Juneteenth as a holiday for the city of Napoleon. And whatever process that needs to roll through, but I think it should be looked at.
I think that Safety and Human Resources Committee is a safety and human resources.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Kevin. Molly?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Lori?
I just want to share that my son completed the Buckeye Boys' Day this past week, and what an amazing experience that was. I was so impressed, and I just want to recognize the American Legion for that, too, and that they are willing and really wanting to sponsor boys and girls to go to those events each year. So I appreciate it, and they are to be commended. It is a, it's a great event, great experience for him. Before I, I don't want to forget, I had a couple of complaints about trash at the boat ramp. I'm down there in the morning, I don't usually see anything during the week, but I guess this is mostly on the weekend when the, the boats come off. Is there any, I don't know, if there's a, a reason, a good reason to put possibly a dumpster or something a little larger there than a trash can? I don't know if that makes sense to do just on the weekend, but apparently there were garbage bags. I got a picture.
Oh, gosh, okay.
Piled up beside the trash cans.
The problem is with the cans that we have in our parks now, people will take their garbage there, too.
Right, right.
Dump everything there.
Right.
So I think adding a dumpster, I don't think is a good idea for those reasons. But, yeah, I'll have to check with, if you don't want to check, I can check with Sean and Tony, see what they do on a daily or weekly basis. I know they're out there first thing in the morning checking.
Right.
That, you know, Ritter Park and the boat ramp, that's the first stop.
Right.
Shelter houses and, I think in the summertime, the boat ramp.
Just thought I should mention it and say that was their suggestion for improving the situation, but I, of course, had the same idea that you did. I just don't, I don't know what you would do about it, but it is unpleasant to look at and smelly sometimes, too, when you're down there on the weekend. And then the other part of that was, I'm noticing the docks are slowly disappearing, but is there a deadline for those to be removed from the boat ramp? The ones that are stored there? The personal ones?
Oh, the personal ones.
There, there used to be dates on those signs down there.
There are dates on those.
I would assume that they're still there, like, you know, this section needs to be removed by June fifteenth. And, you know, if the river's really high, of course, they're not going to.
Right, right.
Yeah, we, we have a record, so what they're supposed to do each year is have them removed or used or whatever, it's not a permanent storage area for them. And I know there have been some years where, you know, you see them sit there. I think there was one year where we actually took some of them out. And, and, but what we do is we have, we have a record of them, we'll contact the property owners and say, you know, time for those to go.
Right, I didn't know if there had been an allowance because of the, the work that was being done down there, that maybe they were there a little longer because they.
Because the, because they couldn't get them in right away. Yeah, but there's been enough time now at this point that it should be, they should be out of there. I think the la, the latest ones, I know there's a June date on one of them. I don't know if there's a July date on one of them. There, there are certain, like, areas where, you know, May, June, and July are the dates where they have to be out.
Right, I'm just curious. That's all from you, thank you.
Thank you. We'll, we'll get on it.
Mr. Mayor?
Quite a few things. I know we talked about, the Molly Valley Planning Organization had a meeting last Monday. We talked about how we're staying with their CHIP program. A lot of the meeting revolved around the upcoming improvements or changes to US twenty-four between Napoleon and Defiance, and how those things are going to change. Basically, a intersection is going to get built, or interchange is going to be built over seventeen D. I know that's been a, a while spent for a lot of places. And a lot of the off onto a county road, like Banner School Road, those are going to go away, and they'll be go more of those interchanges. They're anticipating the traffic on US twenty-four at some point mimicking the current day traffic on I seventy-five. So more is coming on twenty-four, not less. And as that comes on, what you're going to have, you're going to have less access points. Hopefully make it safer like you have between here and Toledo, where you're going to have an interchange to get off, you can't just get off on a, on a county road. So those, those may, things might be coming. Chief Mack, if you could, just tell us a little about cops and bobbers, if you could, for us, please, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely, Mayor. It was an outstanding turnout. Roughly a hundred and fifty kids. We didn't anticipate that at all, so it definitely caused some interesting adjustments on Friday night. But, yeah, no, hats off, I mean, Henry County Sheriff's Office sent several deputies out there. Division of Wildlife came out in a big way. They had multiple officers and wildlife individuals there giving demonstration. So Point Fire was there with their people. No one ended up in the pond. Their kids ended up in the book, so it's always a plus plus. But it was an outstanding turnout. So we're looking forward toward the kickball tournament then, the end of June.
Awesome. Officer Strickland came to Rotary Club, did a nice job, so, yeah, yeah.
He was, he's the one that pulled that together.
Yep.
He does a phenomenal job with things like that.
Yeah, did a nice job. Stay at the safety services. Chief O'Brien, I know there was a fire in town last Wednesday? I know you always send out a, a nice report about it, but can you give us a, a prelook at what you found so far? I know nobody got hurt, which is always the important thing, right? But.
Yeah, yeah, so nobody was hurt at the fire. Nobody was home at the time, but when they got home, there was a fire noted up in the bedroom.
Okay.
And when that, so then obviously they called nine one one, and we were able to put the fire out and be back in service within an hour and fifteen minutes. The state fire marshal's office came up and did the investigation. Nothing is really, it's still going to be left as undetermined. They think they have an idea of how it, you know, potentially started. I can't really say, it was one of those really, really, really hot days. So as Kevin talked a little bit about the peak shaving and the more energy that's used on a regular basis, it heats a lot of those things up, and so that's maybe the possibility. But just certainly can't say. So nobody was injured, and nobody was home at the time, and we were able to, you know, make good, quick work of it.
I drove by later that day, and the structure was still up, and safety tape was around the place, so it was kind of easy to find, but it was nice to know that nobody got hurt, you know, that's always the, the number one thing, right? So that's always good, so. Joel, I drove by Ritter Park, and there's, looks like wooden chin-up bars there with the sign that says, "Don't Touch."
Yep.
Can you, give us a little enlightenment about that?
Yeah, there was a donation that was made earlier this year for river swings.
Okay.
Like those swings that.
Yeah.
I think there were some there before, maybe there's still some there now, but in addition to that, some other swings are installed now.
Again, again, the wooden chin-up bars, "Do not touch," like, well, do you want us to work out or not?
Yeah.
I know we talked about doing records retention meeting. I know we did some stuff for HR, if that Laney had done in her way out. Is her position posted? Do we have a?
It's closed.
It's closed, okay.
So we have a interview panel set up, and we are, we'll be filling that vacancy here as soon as we get interviews scheduled.
You ever get some good candidates?
We did get good candidates.
Good, that's always good to hear. Next Monday, for the first Monday is July the fourth, I'm assuming we're going to meet on July the fifth, right?
Oh, yes, that's right. So calendar-wise, it's in the rules that if there is a meeting that falls on a holiday, it's that following Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay.
The Monday, yeah, you're right. So July fourth will be, July fifth will be the actual council.
Okay.
Unless council decides you want to do something different.
July fifth is fine with me.
July fifth is perfect.
I know Kevin talked about Juneteenth being a city holiday. If it's up to me, let's make it a floating day. That's kind of where I'm at with it. It's kind of hard enough as it is to schedule all the services we have to do, and then give everybody a routine, you get people in a routine, then they're right back out because of all the things going on. But if we could have, you know, make it just a floating holiday for everybody, that's where I would be at. If they want to take that day, great, if they want to take a day later in the year, early in the year, that's, that's what I would do. That's just my, my two cents on that. I need to appoint Dr. Terry Holman to the Preservation Commission. He's appointed.
Congratulations, Senator.
Usually the council just does a quick motion, just approve it, is usually what happens. You don't have to, but that's kind of been our tradition.
I'm here to approve. Sorry, did it already?
I got the second.
All right, thank you.
Joel?
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yep.
Molly?
Yes.
Again, I think, again, it's not required, but I always kind of like doing that. I think a lot of us are hearing on WNDH that they're celebrating their fiftieth year of being on the air, serving Napoleon Henry County, and I'll probably do something for them before the month is out. Tony Carter and I are working on, on something for Matt Hardy. Matt was on Parks and Rec for a long, long time, so we have an idea for that. Finally, last Tuesday, right about noon, I received a, an email from Congressman Latta's office that the congressman is going to be in town on Friday, and if we had any places that we'd like to show him. I got ahold of Jennifer Arps, and she made some calls, she called Dana, she called Tenneco, and they both said, "We'd love to have him, but we want our people to be there, too." And they couldn't make it in that short a time, so we cannot go there. We did stop at Paul Martin and Sons', Doug Martin, showed them around, and showed them some really interesting things that they do out there that I didn't realize that they do. Then we took them to West Shore Tournament Plant because that's where, that's the biggest project we have going on right now for structure-wise in the city. Chad did a great job of being the tour guide that day, and I really appreciate that. We, we all piled into my truck, and Jennifer Arps was able to tell the congressman all about all the stuff going on at Dana. And we, then we went across the River Bridge and talked about that project, and he came up with development for that. And just as we drove by places, she was able to pop off about this company's doing this many jobs, this company's doing this many jobs, and right down the line. We finished the tour at the city pool. I got a lot of strange looks at the city pool, wearing a suit at the city pool, I understand. Was not ready to go swimming, so, but it was a, it was a good visit. And then we stopped real quick at the, the golf course clubhouse there, too. So I know Justin.
Justin, the pool manager?
No, the photographer IT guy.
Oh, Justin Mullins.
That's the one, thank you. I always get confused, Justin, 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 I was one of the two, had a fifty-fifty shot. I took some photos, and we got some really nice pictures there at the golf course. You know, obviously, golf courses celebrate a hundred years, so. But I really appreciate, you know, Jennifer Arps and for all her work of, you know, setting stuff up. Because again, like I said, we got invited on, we were told on Tuesday, and on Wednesday morning, it was always, where's he going, where's he going, where's he going? So we jumped through and got those kind of things done. I know Joel was, was golfing at the Hunkin' Academy Foundation. I called Joe by the rook, and I know he was, he was out. I talked to Molly, she was busy, so it was Congressman, myself, Nicole Gisegi from Congressman Latta's Defiance Office, Jen Arps, and then Jen's assistant Kylie. So that's the five of us that went, so made it really good, really nice visit Friday afternoon, so. That's what we're doing. That's way too much, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Ray?
Two things. Vorwijk Park, the stone area down there really needs some work on it. It's, there was water laying down there, like, it almost looked like a swimming pool after the last storm. And last Wednesday, I noticed, since I have so much time on my hands, it was good to see hands on the time on top of the courthouse.
Yeah, it was good to see hands on the clock, finally.
That's all I have.
You know, Ken, I, we were doing the pledge allegiance today, and I looked at our logo, and now we're on a sink because for a long time, our clock doesn't have hands either. Now we got to add. It's kind of early in the morning, too, since the sun's coming east, so we got to.
Dr. Dave? I'd just like to say I heard a lot of good comments about the cops and bobbers, and a couple people chuckled about the article that was written in the paper. They thought it was a well-written article, a lot of good commentary. They thought it was cute. That's all I got. Thank you. Billy?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Joel?
Thank you. So Ross, Joe, and I went to the APPA National Conference, met a lot of people, went, got a lot of good content from the conference, and. Uh, met a lot of people, went, got a lot of good content, uh, from the conference and just generally speaking, the dynamics of the electric department and just the electric industry are just so ever-changing and vast that it's, there is a lot going on. So, um, there will be some things, I did kind of allude to it in our weekly FYI, that, uh, you know, in the, in the more near future, I think we, there are some things we need to start taking a look at in terms of, you know, metering and addressing some of these concerns with, uh, um, as, you know, and adapting to, um, some of the different changes, the draws that we're going to see from either electric vehicles or behind the meter generation from different sources. So, uh, it's already here, but it's, we should, we should be preparing, expect to see more of that coming. Uh, there's a lot of it. In fact, uh, the, uh, CEO of the Tennessee Valley Authority, uh, spoke at the conference and in one of his statements, he said that we had the, a record, um, uh, a record peak that day and that they were anticipating a record peak the following day. So, um, but just kind of talking and alluding to the, uh, the term resilience and what it, what it means and, and how, what, what it means to be able to withstand that type of, uh, load at any given time. So their, you know, their load is growing, our load, I feel like our load's growing. And, um, you know, just trying to, you know, keep up with things and, and, uh, make sure that we, we are that, well adapted for the, um, uh, for what's coming in the future. Um, one of the things I'll just point out to, one of the specifics that, uh, at our system is that, uh, industrial substation. Um, if we were to do a, just a rebuild as it is now, uh, we wouldn't be adapting for the future. So I, I think that in the long run, what we're seeing is it play out that going with that AMP transmission decision, um, we're seeing that, that second transformer, future transformer holding spot. Um, you know, in the future, we'll, we'll be, we'll, we'll play a role in the expansion of the electric system. So. Um, that was good to, uh, good conference to be at. Uh, last thing I have is, I would just wanted to make sure that, I know I put this in there too, but, uh, and this was posted on our Facebook page, but, uh, we do have a, a Glow Golf event that we're helping put together with the Chamber and the, uh, um, uh, Napoleon Golf Team. And this is the first of its kind for us. And, uh, so we're kind of, you know, learning, I mean, this was scheduled two times before for the Chamber. It got rained out twice, so, uh, hopefully third time's a charm. And, uh, right now, uh, what we're allowing is twelve teams. If it gets overwhelming, we may allow a couple more, but, uh, we do have nine teams registered as of right now. So, uh, just over the weekend, we've, we've had those calls come in and it's booking up. So, um, uh, the next thing we're looking at and, and, uh, Councilwoman Seclaire and I talked about this a little bit. Uh, but, um, you know, the, the golf team and, and Chamber will be, um, fielding calls, uh, hopefully soon after they get through Feast Fest. Uh, and, uh, trying to get, uh, maybe some whole sponsors and, and, uh, you know, some of the other things, so to help out the golf team. So that's coming up. If you don't have a team, sign up quick. Running out of space. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. A couple of things, the, the APPA Conference, uh, out of blast being able to attend. So thank you all for allowing me the opportunity. Um, it's awesome to hear the great ideas that other municipalities are, are doing. Hopefully we can bring some of that, uh, to Napoleon. I think we have a great city manager to advance us in that field. So Joel, thank you for your leadership there. Uh, the Juneteenth topic that Kevin brought up, um, I'd like to refer that to Safety and Human Resources, if possible, with Dan being out.
Yep.
And then there was also an executive session requested for personnel.
Do we make that slightly more specific?
Um, hiring of personnel.
Okay, so the rule states, and that probably works, so to consider the appointment, uh, potentially of, okay. That sounds good, thank you. For appointment of personnel. Uh, may I have a motion for that, please?
Still moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Joel.
Lori.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Well, I guess.
All right, do we have a motion to come out of executive session for appointment of personnel?
A motion.
Second.
Thank you. Joel, please call the roll.
Lori.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yep.
Molly.
Yes.
Thank you. No action taken there. Uh, I will accept a motion to appoint Marissa Hall as Clerk of Council.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Joel, please call the roll.
Lori.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Doc, uh, Ken.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
All right. Item M, approve payment of bills and financial reports. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the payment of bills and financial reports shall stand approved. Hearing none, they will stand approved.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Thank you.
Lori.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.